Well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ethan Collier, and I'm the Chair of the Chattanooga-Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, and we have been meeting, and we've been on a little bit of a break waiting on all of you to get here, so thank you for coming. So, we've conducted quite a bit of business earlier today, and we're going to pick up our agenda where we left it off, which is resolutions and amendments. Thank you all for being here. I want to go over a couple things before we get started. So, as Chairman, I'm given a great deal of power and authority here tonight, and I wanted to kind of give you a high level of what I expect out of everybody here. And just kind of a preview of what we're going to do. So, here in just a minute, I'm going to give the floor to staff. Karen's going to do a brief overview. I think she's probably got 10, 12 minutes in regards to the area plan. And then we're going to hear from Dan Reuter, who most of you know. Oh, Dan wants to go first. Okay, so Dan's going to go first, then Karen. Then we're going to hear public comment. Our plan is to hear public comment until we have heard from everybody. That's the plan. But here's where the plan could go off the rails, is if for some reason, it fails to appear to me to be an orderly meeting. So, if we're having an orderly meeting, and everybody's kind of doing business like we expect, which is either I'm talking, or the people up here are talking, or staff is talking, or the person at the podium is talking. Those are the only people talking, and those are the only people commenting, and we're going to move through things very quickly and efficiently, and the people at the podium here are going to be heard by everybody. And then if there's some sort of question, or there's some sort of comment, those questions, comments, and those sorts of things will be either directed at staff or the person at the podium. So, what we're going to do is we're going to give three minutes to everybody. There's a couple exceptions that we're going to make to that in regards to some people in particular who represent a much larger group of people, and they are recognized as kind of having the opportunity here tonight to speak on behalf of a number of different people. We had a sign-up list that I have here in front of me, and so those people will be given some extended time. Everybody else will have three minutes. If you feel like you're one of those people, and you want to tell us that, that's fine. So, otherwise, you've got three minutes. We do have a clock over here that I can see. I don't know how well. You might twist it a little bit, so the person at the podium can see it as well. Is it actually on the screen during the meeting, the time? So, when you come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then tell us what it is that you want us to know. So, with that, we'll get started. And then, you know, I think, I think we've done this a ton. We do planning commission meetings every single month, and we do them without a problem. But if, for whatever reason, this meeting is looking like it's going to be a problem, then I'll just ask for a motion to adjourn, and I know where to get that from. It'll be on my far, far right. We'll adjourn the meeting, and we'll just be done. So, hopefully, we can just do this really, really well. With that, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanted to start off by thanking everybody that is here today. We've had a lot of meetings over the last couple of years, 33, I'm told, before. We had 33 public meetings before December of last year, so it's been a long process. I was over the weekend reading the newspaper from 2005, when this body approved the plan for, at that time, the 30-year long-range plan. So, we've been doing planning in this city and county for many, many decades, and it's, you know, obviously, we have a wonderful community in so many ways. So, again, I want to thank the citizens who are here today, and who have worked on, read a lot of documents, and participated in a lot of meetings. I wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners and Mayor Womp, who I know is here, for just, again, trusting the RPA to serve in this role. When I got here over three years ago, I really felt it was important for us to have a separate city of Chattanooga and separate unincorporated Hamilton County plan. Most of our growth are in those two jurisdictions, and it's, they're two separate local governments. And I have a lot of trust and faith in the elected officials in both of them, so I thought it was very important to have separate plans for both of our major jurisdictions. And so, as of today, we are pretty close. We have a draft plan for both of them completed. I just, the last thing I'm going to say is that I want to just thank Pam Glazer, who has been kind of leading a lot of these public meetings, Karen Rennick, Brian Schultz, Emily Wood, who's here tonight, of course, Nathan Janeway, who's been helping out a lot from the county. And I want to give some recognition to Reagan Smith, who I don't know if they're here, but they did do a lot of traffic planning. I'm not going to say it so much tonight unless I'm asked to, but I believe the biggest issue we have is that we need a lot more money for transportation improvements in our city and our county. Reagan Smith helped identify some of those projects, and we're going to be talking about that a lot more in the future. Thank you all again for being here tonight, and I will turn it over to Karen Rennick.
Ryan, I could just say, next slide. Can you get there? That's the end. It could be quick, but not that quick. So, about a 10-minute presentation. This will be, for a lot of folks that have been involved in the process or one of those 33 meetings, this will be somewhat redundant, but for, if you're new to the process, hopefully this will catch you up to date. Next slide. So, we're going to start with growth drivers, and then kind of end on planning commission action today. Next slide. These are some of the items that we've talked about, or triggers for growth, or why our community is growing. We have 80,000 students in school. We're on several best places to live list. Next slide. We've also been talking during the planning process, that by 2040, 46,000 households and 60,000 jobs. And we acknowledge that that might not be 2040, it might be a little bit ahead of time, it might be after that, but generally, just acknowledging that our region is adding both households and jobs. Next slide. So, those are reasons and opportunities for us to grow. The plan also identifies some infrastructure needs. The plan identifies $130 million in transportation projects. Each of the plan lists those projects, and they're shown on a map. Next slide. Another infrastructure need is sewer capacity. This is actually a quote from the plan. It says, "Existing capacity and available financial support substantially limits new sewer availability in the unincorporated county in the short and midterm." Next slide. So, one of the goals of a regional plan, and Plan Hamilton, is to have that discussion, understand where we're at. We're talking about the physical development of our community. So, one of the requirements under state law, we'd get our zoning and planning powers from the state. One of the requirements under state law is that a regional planning commission develop, make, and adopt a general regional plan for the physical development of the region. So, Plan Hamilton is that, and I'll be using the term regional plan or comprehensive plan interchangeably. We generally call our local one more of a comprehensive plan. Next slide. So, as Planning Commission knows, renewing our vision is our current comprehensive plan. It was developed in 2016. We did do some updates for various reasons in the past few years, and now, we're replacing renewing our vision with Plan Hamilton and Plan Chattanooga. Plan Chattanooga is a sister effort that Dan mentioned. Next slide. So, Plan Hamilton has been informed by public input. Dan mentioned those 33 outreach events. That's through December 20, excuse me, December of 2024. Since then, there's been quite a few community, unity meetings, and other coordination. Also, just wanted to point out the 2050 Regional Transportation Plan. This is the federally required transportation plan for our area, and those identifies a lot of the projects as large-scale construction projects that are found in the plan. We also supplement plan development with, we have a land use model and travel demand model. Those also link to that regional transportation plan. And then, we did a fire services report, and had quite a bit of input from other Hamilton County departments. Next slide. So, Plan Hamilton is a collection of five area plans, so we're collectively calling it Plan Hamilton. It's our comprehensive plan. They're broken out by areas. So, when people speak, they might talk about the number or the name, but we do have five components of it, and they're generally set up as shown on the right-hand side. They all generally have that structure, except for Area 9, which deviates from that above format. And Area 9 Committee was one of the more active committees from the earlier this year, and Area 9 is the plan that saw the most change since that original December 2024 kind of finalization and heading to planning commission. So, I'm going to try to note where Area 9 is a little bit different, and then we have folks from Area 9 that are here, and they might speak more to that. Next slide. So, the plan is built on research and analysis, as I mentioned, and also public input. Some of the themes across all plans was desire to preserve rural character, improve transportation infrastructure, limit housing that's not single-family residential. That should be developed and clustered more towards centers, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, and then also adding green buffers. And all of those, next slide, are found in the goals. So, there are seven goals in the plan. I'll read them, because the slide's a little hard to read. Balance growth, economy, and community character. Protect and enhance natural resources. Preserve and enhance outdoor recreation. Promote connectivity and multimodal transportation. Provide adequate infrastructure. Provide suitable commercial mixed-use centers. And provide a range of housing options. Again, Area 9 is a deviation from these seven goals. And Area 9 is a little bit more concise, and might have provided emphasis on certain goals, more, one goal more than another. Next slide. So, having research and public input, starting to transition the plan to how these goals are seen in plan recommendations. So, in one way, it's corridor and centers approach. This is a kind of a planning philosophy the planning agency's been using for a while, and it's directing business retail services-type uses in moderate and higher-intensity housing to identified centers and mostly existing transportation corridors. Next slide. And then, can you go forward one more, Ryan, and one more, too? So, these are identified in place types. So, we're showing how development is done in place types, and they're used to describe the desired character of an area. They're addressing uses, density, and some development standards, and they inform zoning decisions. So, going back to, Brian, so residential growth, I wanted to talk about this, but wanted to introduce place types first. Countryside residential and suburban residential place types are primarily used in the plan for residential growth. And so, there are, we talked about, their housing should be clustered closer to centers. You look at place types, you'll see that those diverse housings, diverse housing opportunities are more along centers and corridors. Countryside residential has a maximum of two dwelling units an acre, unless shown on maps, it's 2.5 dwelling units an acre. And suburban residential, shown, it has a max of five dwelling units an acre. So, you look at, you do have the land use place type maps in front of you. You're going to see a lot of the area is countryside residential with some suburban residential. Next slide. We also did a build-out scenario, and this was done by our research and analysis department, and this is not a projection. This is a build-out scenario for residential development, and this is looking at the ability currently to develop or redevelop land. And there are some constraints built into this, like floodways, but it doesn't factor in if someone actually wants to sell their property, if there's a deed restriction, so it's something going on. This is a pretty, it is, it's not that nuanced. It also doesn't look at sewer availability, which is important. So, based on an analysis, 220,000 dwellings could still be built in Hamilton County under the proposed place types. So, that is, again, looking at some factors, but not the wide variety of factors, but we're trying to get a feel for, based on the place type recommendations in the plan, what does residential growth look like? Next slide. So, place types have a description. They're shown on the bottom right, as you know. There's also a density table that notes the recommended maximum density. Planning commissioners do have the place type, a printout of the place type, and the density table, and also the maps, if you need to reference those. Next slide. So, this section's really focusing on updates since December of 2024. Remember, all the plans were finished around Thanksgiving, heading to Planning Commission December. That time, the county and RPA asked to defer the plans for more discussion. So, this is really kind of picking up what's happened since that time. There has been some, some revisions to the map. Changes were made in Area 8, 9, and 12, and Areas 7 and 3 didn't have many map changes. We did clean up the legends and do a little bit more clarity on the mapping, but 8, 9, and 12 had the area of most change. Next slide. Place type updates. So, we are really kind of focusing on the policy recommendations here. I think that's what most people here will be speaking to. And so, place type updates. We had a draft plan in December of 2024. Since then, development standards have been added to countryside residential. It talks about added place type language on the slide, but that is really mostly development standards. So, a two units an acre. A countryside residential max 2.5 dwelling units an acre option has been added, and if you, for example, if you see Area 9, you'll see a 2.5 on that countryside residential. Suburban residential had, I think, one development standard added. It also changed limited uses from seven dwelling units an acre to five dwelling units an acre. And then rural corridor is considered an overlay, and that's really emphasizing maintaining that rural feel and green buffers, and that's adding development standards to address those buffers and setbacks. And then last, this is something, a use that is only found in Area 9 is rural commercial. So, Area 9, like all the other plans, had a mix of different types of place types describing what a center might look like. In working with Area 9, they felt it'd be, it would be perhaps more understandable and more accurately reflect the recommendation. That's just a rural commercial place type, and that is one that's only found, it really combines several place types, and that's one that's only found in Area 9. Next slide. So, some other updates. Area 9 Committee decided to delete some policy recommendations, policy and recommendations. All plans, a memo was added from the Chamber of Commerce, talking about the importance of manufacturing in Hamilton County. So, every plan got that added, just to reinforce that that is important, and to have that with all the documentation when we're referencing a plan as we're starting to use them. And where, also, there's an amendment process, and we'll talk about that a little bit in a few slides. I'll skip that for now. Previously said we were thinking quarterly, and it has changed since then. Next slide. So, state law states it's a function and duty of a regional planning commission to adopt a general regional plan. How we do that is in state law. So, over time, it's developed to, a planning commission has to have a comprehensive general regional plan. It can be adopted by, in this case, Hamilton County. So, the county, I'm going to read this, the county legislative body, a resolution of, or the municipal legislative body by ordinance may adopt the general regional plan. Their element of the plan is certified by the planning commission. And then it talks, the last sentence says, "If the legislative body adopts a general regional plan in the form of a resolution by the county, then any land use decision thereafter made is, must be consistent with the general regional plan." So, I skipped a little bit in there, but the plan process we're on, and that we're talking about here, is proceeding as if the Hamilton County Commission, the Board of Commissioners, is going to adopt this plan by resolution. They don't have to, but we are proceeding as if they are, and, and then we're also setting that up, so to be in line with state law, if they choose to do that. Next slide. So, the Plan Hamilton amendment process is a full plan review every five years. So, when we're thinking about Plan Hamilton, we're thinking about this as the plan for the next five years, with the commitment to do a full plan review at that time. An annual review of policy and map changes, an annual review by staff. We have done this for quite a few items that have come before planning commission, just to make sure we're reviewing the plan, that we're keeping it up to date. And then, an applicant requested plan amendment. So, on the last slide, we just saw that, that amendments need to be aligned, or zoning decisions need to be in line with the plan. If there's a zoning, if there's a zoning case, and I'm going to give an example, if someone wants to develop it five dwelling units an acre, and the plan is recommending a max density of two dwelling units an acre, it might need a plan amendment. So, in this case, the language in the plan says, "The planning commission will consider request amendment area plan every six months, with the First Amendment starting six months after plan adoption." And all that says, "Planning commission," it, I would assume that could also mean applications would only be accepted for every six-month planning cycle. And next slide, please. So, for planning commission action today, there are actually two items on the agenda. Staff is recommending that planning commission send the reviewed, the reviewed plan to county commission for their review and comments, and send back to planning commission for adoption. The idea here is that planning commission could adopt the plan, and send it to county commission, but then they could change the plan, and we don't have to, we don't have planning commissions, adopted plan would not align with county commission. So, what we're doing here is that planning commission has Plan Hamilton in front of them, and certainly here, does that, you know, perhaps changes or other improvements, that that would be forwarded, when planning commission felt appropriate, to county commission. County commission would review that, take whatever action they might want to take, whether that's discussion amongst themselves, and then send that back to planning commission. At that point, we'd start the official adoption cycle. It's a little bit clunky, but it allows for good communication and making sure that ultimately planning commission and county commission have the same adopted plan they're working from. And so, staff is asking for action on the review and not adopting the plan today. And our next slide is about questions, but we might want to go into public comment.
Thank you, Karen. We do have a sign-up sheet up front. I have one here where people have already signed up to speak, and it's right here on the center, right here, Karen, just walk right by. If you want to speak tonight, make sure to come up and sign out, so that I know you want to, you want, you want to talk. Mayor Womp, there you are. You're the first name on the list. I don't know how you pulled that off.
It's my first time doing this. Chairman?
Well, you have to state your name and address for the record. I'm just kidding. You're an exception.
Downstairs. If you can make that bigger, anyway, here in a minute, I'll speak to what you see up there on that screen. First of all, let me say thanks to several people who got us to this day. Probably the most man-hours into this effort is Nathan Janeway, who's been a bridge between stakeholders and community leaders, and he's worked his tail off, and all of us in county government are grateful to him. When we started this Plan Hamilton journey, we tapped county commissioners who represent the unincorporated areas of the county to lead the effort, trusting that they knew their communities better than staff did, or that our office did, and we tried to help them and support them, but we got a lot of buy-in from county commissioners in their respective parts of the county. To the people in the room, I want to say a quick word about planning commissioners, some of whom I'm responsible for appointing. These people have been at it for hours today. They do this on a monthly basis. They're uncompensated. I don't know really why they do it. It is a lot of work. It's really a tremendous amount of work, and I'm grateful that you've been willing to serve your community in this way. And then, to those of you in the room, I think this process has been the best example of local governance in action that I've seen in my nearly three years in office, and I've learned a lot from all of you, particularly those of you who represent different parts of this community, and have stepped forward on behalf of your families, and farms, and stories that you've been handed down generation after generation to share with us, the character and the priorities of your communities. I've learned a lot about the county that I serve from you. One of the things I want to share with planning commission at the outset of this discussion, because I've learned it, it's somewhat obvious, but I've reflected on it a lot through this process. This body and county government, the county commission, have a unique and heavy responsibility of guiding disparate communities across our county with the same level of care and interest and intentionality that the small towns, and I mean the municipalities, the incorporated municipalities guide their towns. Just because Birchwood is not incorporated, or because Mowry Mountain is not incorporated, or Apison, doesn't mean that these aren't communities that have stood the test of time. Some of these counties, communities, particularly Sail Creek, existed before the city of Chattanooga existed. Our county began in the northernmost part of the county. For the first few decades this county existed, everything south of the Tennessee River was a Cherokee Nation. And I think this conversation should begin there with total respect for the communities that may not have their own elected forms of government, but that do have the same, and in some cases, maybe even greater traditions and family lineages involved in these communities than municipalities. But it is the ultimate responsibility of this planning commission and county commission to guide each of those small communities, I would hope, with the same fervor, and again, intentionality, that you'll see in a place like Signal Mountain or Sadi Daisy through its elected officials. I'm going to be brief from this point, but I want to make one statement about infrastructure that has been missed for decades at this planning commission, and I'll leave most of the debate to y'all who understand these issues, and the community leaders who have stepped forward as advocates. I'll leave it to y'all to, to settle the details. This map, which is actually pretty hard to read, so I don't know how helpful it's going to be, but I'll give context to those of you who may not be able to see it well. In the bottom-left corner, you see the city of Chattanooga. Roughly, you'll see the shape of Hamilton County running north. If you look, so the cursor, move the cursor over to Birchwood, up to the right, just to give you an idea. Looky here. We've enlisted some technology. I'm going to take this home to my kids here in a little bit. All right, Birchwood, Chattanooga, roughly Hamilton County. You can see the outline. I think it's that thin red line there. That's Hamilton County. Big county. We talk about infrastructure, road infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, a lot. We don't talk as often about public education, which I think might be the most important type of public infrastructure, and it certainly is important. I'm looking at my friend Dr. Highlander here, who's spent his life in this endeavor, is certainly of the utmost importance to my office and many of y'all here. And I'm, I'm here primarily to make the point that the county is not doing its job as well in parts of this county as we are in other parts, and I want this body and the public to be aware of this, and for all of us to work in earnest to address it, but to consider its implications as it relates to this plan. This line, you may wonder what the black line running east to west is. This is Snow Hill Elementary. This, of course, is the Tennessee River. At Snow Hill Elementary on the east side of Hamilton County, that's the last public school. It's about 16 miles from Birchwood to Snow Hill Elementary. Just to give you an idea of how the unincorporated parts of the county aren't the extra parts of the county, they are all their own communities with their own challenges and own needs. The west side of the county, from the perspective just of public education, is this different. This is Loftus and McConnell, right here in Lakeside. This is Sadi Elementary, Allen Elementary, Daisy Elementary, Sadi Middle School, Sadi High School. You've also got Skiller and Elementary and Ivy Academy, two public charter schools. And then at the north end, you've got North Hamilton, Sail Creek Middle, and Sail Creek High School. All totaled, that's 13 schools on the west side of the river, where you've got one school on the east side of the river. Now, historically, this was not the case, to be clear. The county, for reasons that few in this room, if any, could explain adequately, has divested in public education in northeast Hamilton County. And, and again, Dr. Highlander would know more about this than any per- And again, Dr. Highlander would know more about this than any person, and it may be part of the discussion tonight. He has deep roots at the old Birchwood School, which was a K-12, almost on the Megs County line. It was in operation as recently as about 15 years ago, as an elementary school, right close to Georgetown at Meadowview, there was a primary school until just a few decades ago. But in terms of the county that I'm trying to lead, where my kids will grow up, this doesn't cut it. Doesn't cut it that if you live in Birchwood, a community that's existed for decades prior to the Civil War, where so many people my age who went to Birchwood are now homeschooling their children, because they want to raise their kids in the same community where they grew up, but the public school system has not given them a reasonable option. Because I don't think any of us believe that an hour school bus ride is really a reasonable option, and that's pretty much what you're looking at at Snow Hill Elementary. I don't have a specific solution to this, but I did feel an obligation, while there's so many different considerations today, and in the days and weeks ahead as it relates to this plan, to bring to y'all, for your consideration, that in the Area 9 portion, and then also to some degree in Area 13, on the west side of the river, that north-end Sail Creek area, while public school infrastructure is strong there, other types of infrastructure are not. As we've learned, bringing water to McDonald Farm, there are parts of Sail Creek without water, there are parts without electricity, but it's this northeast part of our county, one that Greg, State Representative Greg Vidal walked in earlier, it's a part of our county that's near and dear to his heart, he's played the role of historic preservationist, conservationist there. I have become, I've lost sleep, literally, over our county's lack of adequate public education in this area. And I would implore all of you in leadership roles to be cautious in encouraging growth, let's say, north of Mahan Gap, that's a line that Commissioner Eversaw has identified, is where, in this Area 9 area, this planning area, that is frankly, the combination of communities, some that are suburban and some that are much more rural. North of Mahan Gap, I think we should be very cautious about encouraging growth until our school system has taken action to address public education in a way that serves families there, because we simply don't think this meets our standards as a community. In a place where we have made investments, and we've pledged historic investments in public education just in the next few years, we can do better. Historically, we have done better, and to prove to you that things aren't proper, the zip codes that make up Birchwood, this general northeast part of the county, kind of stretching down to Georgetown, those zip codes are no more or less populated than Sail Creek. It's about the same number of people, it's just the difference of whether we're providing the services and doing our job, and I fear that we're not, and I wanted that to be included in this conversation moving forward. With that, I'll turn it over to the public, and again, thank you all for your service to our community.
Thank you, Mayor Womp. All right, so I'm going to take these in order that I have them here. So I'll call your name when it's time for you to speak. You may be Don Johnson. Okay, well, there you go.
Is it you and Greg that are going to, that we've given 10 minutes to? Okay, thank you.
Can we make sure the mic is on as well?
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I want to thank you all for hanging over tonight. I know this is getting late to you, and you have a full day, and I want to thank you guys for all showing up, to show your support for our area. Next slide. Okay, Area 9, the committee was created when we got the feeling that a lot of the citizens were not happy with the original RPA plan. So our group got together, and the committee was given the opportunity to create a plan for the future development. Committee attempted to balance the desires of the residents, to maintain the rural character, as the mayor has talked about, as well as address the infrastructure impacts, all while supporting the needs for growth in the county, but responsibly. That required all the parties to be involved, to be cooperative, and to develop a compromise plan, which we did. Next slide. Some of the things that the committee found that the community really wanted was that they didn't want to lose the character of the area, the rural area. The area roads are being overloaded and obviously are unsafe. We are adverse to the high-density housing that was originally proposed. We're also adverse to the large commercial buildings and commercial developments that were proposed, and we're also really concerned about the frequent rezoning from A1 to residential, which is really taking up a lot of our original farm properties. Next slide. So this is a chart, and I'll use Mayor Womp's pointer. The one on the left is the original RPA plan. The one on the far right is the one that our committee developed, and I know you can't read that, but I'm going to summarize it for you. We then worked with many entities to kind of come up with a compromise, and then, at the very, kind of towards the end of our process, we got some more feedback from some other groups that we might want to move a little bit farther in some directions. So let me kind of quickly go over, say, I know you can't read those, but the RPA plan, the plan was going to bring the city to the country. They were going to build villages, city villages, commercial and residential property, all along Highway 58, which really can't support that. They were adding significant traffic to most of the roads, and they were adding large commercial developments. The plan amendment process, as was talked about, wasn't really well-defined, and how do you go? And when I say, when we say amendment process, that's another term for rezoning. So the rezonings that were going to happen were going to happen every four times a year. We didn't feel that was appropriate, so the city committee, we basically went in at it and rewrote it so that we would be able to retain the rural character, eliminate the village centers. We wanted small commercial, single-story, you know, so we could have restaurants and things like that, but not the large commercial. Lower the density of the developments from the five, seven apartments and condos which were proposed in the original, those are gone. And because a lot of you have seen, along the highway, our small highways, we get a lot of developments right up against the road, and they're kind of unsightly, and so one of the things that we've included is called birth buffering, and so that you don't have the houses right up against the highway, and they have trees, berms, things that kind of keep it from being an eyesore. And we actually wanted the rezoning to be once a year. The compromise was, we couldn't have that all, we couldn't have all of it. So we basically have conceded and come up with a couple of things, like countryside 2.5 instead of two. We've reduced some of the buffering, some of the setbacks. And then, the final proposed plan was to, and this one is going to have to be debated, the final plan was for, some of the groups wanted to raise the current agricultural A1 from two houses, an acre, to three. And we're really kind of resisting that, and that's going to have to be worked out. So, that's the summary of all those. So, the, next slide. The final thing I want to talk about is this rezoning. Currently, today, you can rezone once every month, and that goes in front of this group, and then the County Commission, and that puts a lot of burden on the RPA, as well as the citizens. So our vision is to go ahead and try to make that more reasonable, anywhere from one to two, and then, the thing about it is, the plan and the vision that we're setting is not going to change that frequently, so we don't understand why we need to rezone that frequently. And then, we need to also revise the original plan that we got out there. We spent a lot of time in the compromise mode, we think we've got a fair and equitable one, and I'll say, everybody in the process worked together very well. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Greg Lewis. He's got some additional interesting things.
Greg Lewis, 5555 Hunter Road, next slide, please. Right there, yes, thank you. So our team did some benchmarking. That table on the right shows the base densities of each of the top 10 fastest-growing counties in Tennessee. You can see Hamilton's number six there, that's per the Census Bureau. You can also, oh, that stuff. So you can also see that Hamilton County not only allows the highest base density, we're significantly higher than most of the other counties when it comes to agricultural zoning. Our team looked at 40% of all the Tennessee counties, and of these counties, none allowed a base density of more than two homes per acre. We're not asking to reduce that or anything, we're just pointing that out, that Hamilton County tends to be on the high side from a density standpoint for agriculture. And I know at our community meetings that we had out in our area, you know, we had hundreds of people come, and they were all very adamant that they want to protect our rural heritage and character of our area. Next page. This next one, we're actually going to ask for your help on it. "We have concerns about the evaluation process that we use to determine the potential impacts that future development will have on existing communities. Traffic studies only seem to focus on current situations. These studies don't consider all the developments along the same road that are already approved, but just haven't been built yet." So our team attempted to calculate those impacts by looking at the whole picture. You know, we're not traffic engineers, and we don't pretend to be traffic engineers, so we're asking for your help with getting the right subject matter experts to work with us to take a look at this, and see if this is, see if this is close to accurate, or if we've missed something somewhere as we've tried to analyze this. Because we think we want, that it's important that we have an accurate picture of the true impact of development in our area. If this is even close, you can see the numbers over there in the far-right-hand column of what we could anticipate traffic to look like, assuming three-quarters of the houses that are already approved or built in our area. Next slide. Last slide. This is just pointing out some detour distances in our area. Our rural roads do not have the connectivity that roads do in other parts of the county. This is both a safety and a convenience issue. You know, if you're driving down, you know, Ringgold Road, and there's something blocking the road, an accident or a fire, or whatever, you know, you can take the next right, go down a block or two, and continue on your way. You know, in our area, if you block the wrong road, you can have a 10-mile detour, and for emergency responders, that could be a huge deal. Okay, thanks. In closing, we just ask that you approve the compromise plan that we've put together. Thank you.
Thank you both. Hold on, hold on one second. I want to give the opportunity to Planning Commission to ask any questions of staff. I've got one in particular, and then want to open the floor up for any other comments. So, it was Don that said that there was a, he was talking about rezoning, Dan?
Yes.
And when he was, I wasn't quite sure what he was talking about, but I didn't want to ask him, I wanted to ask you, because it sounded like he was saying that RPA was rezoning the property, and I didn't know if, I was the only one that heard that.
That was, I didn't intend that, I'm just saying that, you know, the current rezoning process goes RPA, you guys, and then the commission, and, you know, it's currently done on a monthly basis today. We're asking it to be less frequent.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on the fact that rezoning's not being initiated by RPA, it's being initiated by property owners in that area. And then, the second was, at the tail end of that, I heard traffic estimates don't consider future homes previously built. I mean, we've had traffic studies done, we've required traffic studies to be done. Can anybody speak to the factual nature of that comment? Because I'm wondering whether or not that's a thing.
So, I think what is being placed on the slide is an evaluation of, when there has been a traffic study, it didn't consider all the background traffic, that may be development that's not built yet, but it's already entitled, so it's already been zoned. So at some point in the future, it'll be developed, and that'll be added to traffic. That might be part of it.
But I mean, that's an easy problem to solve for, in regard, I mean, a traffic study is just an engineering project, and it's not hard, I wouldn't think, to require that traffic studies take into consideration any previously entitled unbuilt developments to address this problem.
I would like to use it as an opportunity to say, the traffic studies and traffic evaluations that we did take on Plan Hamilton, looked at the design specifications of all the county roads, what their, if it's a two-lane road or a four-lane road, what is the intended amount of trips, what's the trips that today, the Tennessee DOT has sort of documents on there? And then, you know, we do have traffic models that try to project this out through our MPO role, but my point in all this is going to be, we do have a transportation issue, and the transportation issue is that we need a serious investment program, not just in the county, but in the city, to address bigger projects than what we can do through just the County General Fund. The county's budgeting money to work on transportation needs, but I believe through Plan Hamilton, I bet if we did a whole bunch more analysis, we'd find that we have a lot of projects and a lot of needs that we're not getting close to with our current money. We need a lot more money for roads.
Thank you, Dan. Does anybody else have any other questions? All right. Kathy Faulkner?
My name is Lisa Riggins. I live at 7315 Snow Hill Road. A lot of you guys have already seen me at other things. Not sure if all of you were, I don't know your appointment dates and all that, those sorts of things, but my husband and I have had to come here three times for one particular commercial property that was going next to me. So when that happened to me, it lit a fire in me, and to see my home possibly be changed. But you guys listened to me at that time, so I'm asking you to listen to what we've compromised with. I think that this will help our area, it'll maintain the character that we have. I'm sorry, I've kind of had a little crackling in my voice. But today, when you look at me, I had people, I had two people in my driveway this morning, and I've had multiple calls today of people who couldn't come. I live, all of my neighbors are elderly, and they cannot come to these meetings. So when something goes up, they can't come, and most of them do not email either. So when you give them the proper communication, they're not going to do anything but call. So, I literally, when I say this, my husband laughs, but he laughed today when people pull up in the driveway, because they know me, I'm a third-generation family, and I can probably name probably 50 people in this room that I know by name, I know where they live, and I know their concern. So, we're just asking you to look at the plan that we've put forward. Womp was gracious enough to send Nathan Janeway, and I saw her upstairs, the staff, when we worked on the plan. So, we just asked you to listen to us. So, there's no benefit to any of the things, we just live there, and I want to keep everything the way it is. I know that we have development and construction and all of those things, and I know that's coming, but we want to keep the character and the life that we have. And I know that's coming, but we want to keep the character and the life that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Dan, I've got one more question for you. Or Karen or somebody. So what's been referenced a couple of times here in the last couple of minutes is the compromised plan that we've got here in front of us. And then, you know, the same table, if you could, Brian, pull it up. So is it, or is it not the case that currently this I feel like somebody's just won an award. Is that what happened? Okay. And they picked that up? They picked that up on the first floor, right outside the door? Okay. So is this compromise plan actually?
So.
How's that being incorporated?
I don't know which column represents what is in the package.
Well, the one there that says compromise plan.
And the Area 9 Plan is the compromise plan, although I think there's a desire of the committee perhaps to change suburban residential to board dwelling units an acre. But the plan represents suburban residential, five dwelling units an acre.
Okay, so the current plan is represented
That's correct.
by this compromise plan? Okay.
And that's Area 9?
Sure.
Yes.
Area 9 only.
Correct.
Okay. And would we actually have this plan amendment process piece as well in Area 9? And it be different than the rest of the?
The plan amendment process is the same across all plans.
Okay, so that piece in particular is not incorporated?
It is incorporated in the compromise, Area 9 Plan, and in all the plans.
So right now, the intention is that countywide, there would be a plan amendment process. It's currently listed as six months. But again, that's up to the Board of Commissioners and what they ultimately support.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand. The plan amendment process that these folks are requesting is the frequency be two years. The current is I'm sorry, two times a year.
Yeah.
And that's the six months that's in there.
Correct.
Now, we'll be clear. You can submit a rezoning case every month. I mean, we can't keep people from submitting a rezoning case. What they're asking is that if the rezoning case is in conflict with the plan, you would have a periodic interval of which you could come forward and ask for a plan amendment if it's in conflict.
Why would you ever submit something that wasn't in conflict? Why would I be seeking zoning if I wasn't in conflict with the plan?
I mean, you could have rezoning requests right now that are consistent with the plan. I'm not sure if that's probable because most of the counties own A1s.
Just to be clear, there's quite a few areas, especially in Area 12 and Area 8, that are labeled suburban residential that are currently A1. So if you came forward in an area that's labeled suburban residential and you were requesting R1 from A1, that would be with the plan. So that would be accepted and you could go before the Board for a rezoning request. The only time you couldn't theoretically, the only time that you would be in conflict is if you go forward with a R1 request in an area labeled countryside residential, which is the same as A1.
But that has not been approved yet, so that's just a, I'm gonna say.
And then, what would that mean? That would mean that you could not rezone the property except for two times a year, right?
If you were in
If your rezoning request was in conflict with the plan, there would be two times a year where those rezoning requests could be made.
Right.
Okay. Is it possible for somebody to say how many rezoning requests there's been for Area 9 in the last year? No, that's not possible?
No, it's definitely possible.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but typically, this is countywide. We process roughly anywhere 45 to 50 cases a year typically. I don't know, I could look at it.
Unincorporated.
Unincorporated. I could go back and look at Area 9.
I just want to vocalize some concerns with that because I see some unintended consequences for the community. And I just want to voice them, which is, you know, right now, you have zoning requests that come up from time to time and you're working through those with the developer and your county commissioner. And there's a certain pace at which those meetings happen and there's a certain speed at which they move through Planning Commission. I can't fathom being in a community's position with seven all happening at the same time or eight. So say, for example, there were five, six, seven last year in Area 9 and now, all of a sudden, rather than having one or two happening at a time, you have all of them happening at a time. I think that could be very difficult for people to process.
And I want to make sure we get to our public comments because I think this is the most important thing here tonight. But I think most folks in the audience and most folks here know that we are very limited on sewer availability in the county. And I think it's unlikely we're going to have a lot of new rezoning requests until we resolve that issue. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
But see how that goes.
Thank you. I have Julian Bell down here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Julian Bell, 3221 Harrison Pike. I'm here on behalf of the Home Builders Association of Greater Chattanooga and also on this issue for the Greater Chattanooga Realtors. Speaking for a large group, anybody that's here for the realty community or the home builder community, would you please stand up? Thank you. We represent hundreds of local businesses and thousands of employers. And we provide housing to Hamilton County citizens. As most of you know, the Greater Chattanooga Realtors are uniquely advocates for both consumers and property owners, protecting private property rights and promoting access to attainable housing for all. And I'm proud to be here to speak on these two groups. We're here to urge you to modify Plan Hamilton. I'm not sure of what the process is after seeing the first slide. We came here asking for amendments, so my comments will be in that light. I'm not sure if that's the process now or not. Plan Hamilton, as it's currently written, promises to negatively impact three things. Housing costs. It will cause housing to be more expensive. Housing availability. There will be fewer homes built under this plan in Hamilton County. And importantly, property tax revenue. It'll lead to slower property tax growth and lead to either higher taxes or reduced services or both. Importantly, there have been no studies on how the plan will impact any of these three items. We're extremely concerned about the plan and we've offered amendments that each of you have received to help reduce the plan's impacts in these areas. Let me talk about housing costs for a minute. Until 2024, according to the Chattanooga Association of Realtors, the median cost of a new home, of a home in unincorporated Hamilton County was $378,000. And it's not getting any lower. It is rising. New home median costs are over $400,000. The average first-time homebuyer age is over 35 years old. The annual income needed for a first-time homebuyer or for to buy a median-priced home is over $110,000. We are in a housing crisis, not just Hamilton County, but nationwide. And we are pricing our children and our grandchildren out of homeownership. Homeownership is a way to build wealth, which for generations, that's been the predominant way for families to build wealth. That's coming to an end in our county. And Plan Hamilton doesn't help it in its current form. Every surrounding county to Hamilton County has lower housing costs. That's a big reason for the figure in the RPA slide deck, which was an excellent slide deck that was shown to many community groups. It showed that 91,000 people drive in from other counties every day to work in Hamilton County. We need to support regulations and policies that encourage new home building and don't discourage it. Policies that lower the cost of new home buildings, not increase it. And we need to support policies that will increase our tax base so that tax increases and service reductions aren't needed. We need to support regulations that support a decreased amount of land that we use for housing and decrease urban sprawl. And the amendments that we've offered are an effort to improve the plan in each of these areas. Let me touch on residential growth paying for itself before I go any further. I sent each of you a study that was done, that was commissioned by the county. I'm sure each one of you has heard the statement, residential development doesn't pay for itself. At many of the community meetings, this was stated. It said to mean that the county pays more in services that it provides to new housing developments than those housing developments provide in property and sales taxes, and it's simply wrong. The study commissioned by the county from UTC showed that new residential more than pays for itself. And I provided each of you with a copy of this study. Density. We have four groups of amendments. They're in the areas of density, new regulations, overly broad statements, and the amendment process itself. So let me talk about density and why that's important. The average cost of a developed lot in our county is about $100,000 plus or minus right now. So every new home is going to have a land cost baked into it that's at least $100,000. The only way to lower this cost and thus lower the cost of a house is to allow a reasonable amount of density for residential construction. According to figures provided by RPA, if we look at each of the five areas, Areas 7, 8, 9, 12, and 13, and you take the acreage for the entire area and you look at the place type called Preserve, which is no development allowed, and you subtract that of that remaining area countywide, 78% is countryside residential, which is at two units per acre, the lowest density. That's alarming. What that means is this plan will designate the large majority of our county for large homes on large lots. I like large home on large lots. You can sell large homes on large lots, but not everybody can buy them. And as a county with a median income or median household income of about $74,000, again, it's pricing a large segment of our community out of the market. So we proposed an amendment to where you would have a density limit in the countryside residential of two units per acre where you're on a septic tank. And then if you're on a sewer or a decentralized sewer system or some other technology which may exist in the better part of five years, you could go to three homes per acre. That will reduce the overall land used for residential development, reduce urban sprawl, and help lower the cost of new homes. Let me touch on some of the broad statements in the plan that, from our standpoint, could just be used to deny a rezoning completely. In Area 7, the plan says, "Majority of future development in Area 7 should be located within the incorporated town boundaries of Signal Mountain and Town of Walton." What that means to us is, don't even try rezoning. Area 7, again, "Base density should remain low and rezoning to higher density should only occur in incorporated areas." Area 13, "Hold development to base density on A1 property." These types of statements can be used to determine that virtually any rezoning request for new residential development is inconsistent with the plan and requires a plan amendment. We've offered amendments to revise or eliminate these types of statements. New regulations. The plan is replete with either mandating new regulations or updating of existing regulations or the creation of new regulations. Steep slopes, sidewalks, buffer zones, landscape requirements, setbacks of homes, access points for subdivisions, connecting subdivisions to adjoining developments or property, driveway spacing, garage setbacks, sewer tap fees, updated stormwater regulations, floodplain regulations. We have a process for this and we should go through that process to update our zoning code, update our subdivision regulations. And we shouldn't bypass it by placing these regulations within the plan where they haven't been properly vetted with the right stakeholders and gone through the right process. All regulation has a cost. And not all regulation is bad, but there's a process for that and we should go through it. The amendment process. The plan contains statements that say an amendment will be required if a rezoning is not consistent with the plan. And that those rezoning requests will only be heard once every six months. I think one plan still says quarterly, but it's probably a mistake. There are no criteria for plan amendments. The plan says that RPA in the county will determine criteria for plan amendments sometime in the future. It gives some guidelines, but we're not clear on what it means to be inconsistent with the plan and what the criteria for plan amendments is going to be. The plan says further that amendments will be permitted when there's a significant change in the development pattern or the completion of a public road improvement or a park or a sewer, which changes the basis on which the plan was developed for an area. But nothing has been shown to us to show that the metric, or no metric's been provided or context for showing how these constraints are determined. We understand constraints on development, but we don't understand how those were applied to specific areas and how that would come up in a specific rezoning. We proposed amendments that will allow us to continue rezoning requests on a monthly basis. And we would like to understand better how the constraints on development would be baked into the amendment process. In conclusion, I want to say that as home builders and as Realtors, we understand that we can't we can't build anything but homes on half-acre where there's no sewer or there's no technology that allows anything but a septic tank. We understand that. But we don't believe that's a reason to embrace this lack of infrastructure in an entirely new layer of regulation that sets in place an expectation that Hamilton County is not open for growth. Think about the magnitude of designating 78% of our county to the lowest possible density. Large homes on large lots. Again, the consequences that we see of adopting the plan would be increased housing costs, more land developed with fewer homes, more homes built in the counties that surround us, every one of which counties have less expensive housing, and decreased property tax revenue growth. We appreciate the opportunity to address you and hope you'll seriously consider and adopt our amendments. And I'm happy to answer anybody's questions. I know we sent a large volume of information to you. I'm happy to answer anyone's questions that might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Any questions? Yes. Mr. Vroom?
Mr. Bell, sorry, just a question. So you said the average age of a first-time homebuyer is 35 years old?
Yes, I think it's more than that, actually.
How has that trended? Do you guys know over the last five or six years?
You know, the Realtors have unbelievable statistics on that and it is getting higher and higher and higher, simply because of the increase in housing costs. Housing costs nationwide are going up. So I don't know what it is right now. That's actually from September of last year. Oh, yes.
Hello. Josh Branham, Governmental Affairs Director for Greater Chattanooga Realtors. Don't hold me to it, but it's either 40 or 41 for first-time homebuyers. That's the nationwide. If I could find that for you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayby.
I don't necessarily have a question specifically on that, but I do have a comment. That is terrifying to me in the sense that I know that my grandparents, like probably most people's grandparents in this room, you know, relied on the money that they had in their home for their retirement years. And so if our children are not starting the homeownership process till they're 40 years old, they will be long retired before that house is paid off. And that really worries me about the financial solvency that we're going to have for our future generations. So just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, questions? Karen Eves?
Hello. My name is Karen Eves and I have lived at 7003 Mountain View Road in Udoa for the past 44 years on what was my husband's family farm. And as you can imagine, we've seen a lot of development over the decades. And I myself have been before the Planning Commission three different times as rezoning requests have been addressed for my particular neighborhood. And as a result, I'm here today representing my neighbors and myself to urge you to embrace this compromise plan of Plan Hamilton, not only on our behalf, but for those future residents that will become a part of our community. As multi-billionaire investor Warren Buffett has said, "Someone's sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago." I urge you to plant a tree today to cast some shade for those coming behind us, along with those of us already dealing with the negative impacts of unmitigated growth. Our children and our grandchildren will be extremely grateful. Our children and our grandchildren will be extremely grateful for your insight and your foresight. Thank you.
Any questions? Bill Penny Bianco? Is Bill here? There you are.
Bill Penabianco, 3248 Waterfront Drive, Chattanooga, Tennessee. I'll be pretty brief because Julian said pretty much everything that I would have said. The biggest thing, and I represent both realtors and home builders because I am both. The biggest thing that Plan Hamilton is really doing is, as Julian said, limiting who can buy a home. And those people who own the farms that want to sell to a developer, they should have every right to sell that farm just as much as the person who doesn't want them to sell to a developer doesn't want them to. That's their land and their legacy. And if they want to sell that and take it as cash instead of having a 500-acre farm, that should be their right as well because we believe in the rights of homeowners, people who currently live there, people who may live there, people who buy, people who sell, people who rent, and people are renting to the renters. Everyone should have equal rights in homeownership. And quite frankly, the fact that 40 is the approximate age of a first-time home buyer, that is terrifying, Chris. I agree with you. That's absolutely terrifying. And people should be able to buy a home and not have to have some greedy landlord taking all their money, which I'm a greedy landlord because I do own some investment properties. But it's everyone's American dream to own their own home. Why should we take that from them in Hamilton County? And the fact that 90,000 people drive into Hamilton County every day that have to live somewhere else, I think that's the only stat that we need to think about. Do we want those people paying taxes somewhere else or paying taxes in Hamilton County? That's all I got.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions? Gary Bowles?
Gary Bowles, 5812 Mountain Pass Drive in Udoa. I was also on the Area 9 Committee. I started on this journey in mid-2023 when an attempt to rezone from A1 to R1 property adjoining mine would have allowed more homes in the area issued support. I'll not bore you with the details. By making this Planning Commission and the County Commission aware of the traffic burden on the neighboring roads, the incompatibility of an R1 tract among predominantly A1 properties and the many already planned developments on Hunter Road, Snow Hill Road, and the surrounding area, we were able to convince the developer to withdraw this resulting proposal. It also increased the awareness of our officials to realize our concerns. Some of them even listened. Many of us have participated in this most recent Hamilton County Growth Plan, and we saw the plans such as the Wolftever Plan and the White Oak Plan regarded as simply guidance that could be amended by a well-spoken developer. They received honorable mention at best and totally ignored by the commissions at worst. Some area plans had never even been approved through a resolution by the County Commission. To me, this indicated that real plan development was not a priority and failed to recognize that job growth through attracting large industries didn't take into consideration the need to address residential infrastructure to support those obtaining those jobs. Payment in lieu of taxes even robbed the county of funds needed for infrastructure. We saw the plan prepared by the RPA contractor as verbose, vague, and slanted too much toward the build, baby, build mentality when we all know the current infrastructure would not support it and a funded, long-range plan to address the infrastructure did not exist and still doesn't. Hopefully, that will change. As one of the many who are tired of talking about it, we decided to go do something about it. We compromised on things like density, something important to me, and the frequency of amending the plan, which we've discussed. My last thought is that bigger is not always better. I don't think Hamilton County needs to be in competition with other Tennessee counties for size. A mountainous county cut in half by a large river with only a few ways to cross the river makes it difficult to become a large metropolis. But I believe most of us like this area and live here because it's not a metropolis. Do not use the notion, do not use the notion that Nashville does this or Clarksville does that. That doesn't hold water with many of us. I urge you to vote for the amended plan that we put forth and allow our government, the builders, and the public to slow down, breathe, and work on a better way forward. Thank you.
Owen Hargraves?
I got one question. Just a, and this is just a, I want to understand the process, I guess. The plan, one portion of this plan is talked about as a compromise plan. I'm understanding. But in my mind, a compromise means there was, I want, who was compromising is my question. Who was involved in the compromise?
I'm not going to use the term terminology of compromise because to me, we started a process. There was a process by which we did analysis of roads.
Who are you saying, the Planning Commission? Who, RPA?
RPA and staff. And then we had a lot of public meetings. You know, we had a draft of the place type maps or the land use maps. We had a draft of the transportation priorities and projects needed. And all of that kind of came together as a draft plan. The reason I'm not using this compromise stuff is the entire process is a compromise. That's what a plan development is. We are developing a plan that ultimately it's the Board of Commissioners who legally will support the plan, who legally can change zoning, who legally can help us fund new roads. It's the Board of Commissioners that have all the authority. And so we're developing a plan for the Board of Commissioners to support because they're the elected officials representing the citizens. So I never see it as compromising with anyone. I mean, we're compromising.
It's all building the plan. That's what I'm asking. I didn't know if there was two people sitting here.
Just to clarify, our compromise plan was that we had roughly 20 folks involved, citizens, residents, builders, farmers, and we tried to take their input. We had some of the political world. Several of the commissioners have helped us, and I think it's a little bit more than what I think you're talking, Dan. This was, this was kind of a, we worked through some of those issues that the builders meant. Obviously, we still have some more to do.
Owen?
Owen Hargraves, I live at 7408 Short Tail Springs Road. I wish that my brother were here to speak in my stead. He's more of the orator. He's a lawyer. He lives next door to me. My other brother serves in the Chattanooga Police Department. He lives next door to him. My parents live next door to me as well. My other neighbor, and almost consider him a family member, he's a third-generation cattle farmer. He's been doing what he's been doing for longer than I've been living in my current address. I just moved here to do a similar lifestyle, to raise animals, to be away from the big city, the 15-minute city that Chattanooga is trying to build itself up to be. And it's trying to incorporate parts of Hamilton County into that as well. That kind of expansion concerns all of us who live outside of that kind of life. And with all due respect to Mayor Womp, vast majority of us who homeschool our children, we do so because that's the way we want to raise them. That's the better life that we have envisioned for them, not because it's too inconvenient to send them on a bus ride. It's a lot of work to homeschool your kids. It's a lot of work to raise animals. It's a lot of work to do anything relating to any kind of farming. And expansion into our home, into our little area of Short Tail Springs Road, over the years since I've been living here, has greatly concerned me. When I was little, in the mid-'90s, my parents, my dad would use to take me on runs down Short Tail Springs, and we would stop at Snow Hill and then circle back to our house. Can't do that anymore because of how traffic patterns have increased. Didn't occur to me as a child, but as I grew up, I realized that more and more homes being built, and yes, the homes being built on Snow Hill right now and the homes that have already been built, has increased the traffic there so much that only several months ago, a child was killed in a dreadful car accident on Snow Hill. The roads are not prepared for this kind of increase in living. We're not prepared for this kind of increase in housing. We don't want it. And as my brother, the attorney, would say if he were here, the community here, I believe the vast majority of them, thinks that development is out of control and needs to either slow down or stop. And if that appears to be the case, and I believe it is, then the community should be able to make that decision. Maybe the Planning Committee doesn't think that's a good decision, but it should be our decision. Thank you.
Is it Josh Branham?
Hello again, Josh Branham, Governmental Affairs Director, Greater Chattanooga Realtors, 2963 McCall Highway. Just because I had it in front of me and I always want to be a resource to those who are making decisions, just searched the National Association of Realtors profile of first-time home buyers, and the national average was 38. So, you know, I like to tell people that I'm near 40 years old, but, you know, 38, you know, close enough. I'll just say, Mr. Bell from the Home Builders Association summarized our points very well. They were voted on by our Governmental Affairs Committee, also our executive committee from our Board of Directors as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Dan, can you hand me that list? I think some additional people have signed up to speak. All right. Is it Jan Ditzer? Ditzer?
Thank you, Jan Ditzer, 2413 Woodthrust Drive, Chattanooga, 37421. I'm not with people in Area 9. I represent the people of Area 12, which is kind of the forgotten redheaded stepchild in this. There was a group of us, Commissioner Hilton, Mike Price, and David Bartow and Ronnie Spooner. We sat it down and we hashed out what was presented to us in Area 12. And altogether, we decided that the previous Area 12 plan that was accepted in 2022 was far superior to what the community was wanting and needing. At this time, Mr. Bell stole some of my thunder on the zoning, and that seems to be an incremental problem. But then, too, you've also got a changing population. You've got people that are older, people that are younger. Values are changing, purposes are changing. So consequently, one size doesn't fit everybody. And part of the RPA's problem with all this, I think, has been that they have done a poor job in reaching out to the community members and educating them into the different varieties of options that are available. Like, you go through and you look at some of the data that's in the Area 12. You've got a supposedly, a random, I don't know specifics, the population of 32,000, but yet you only had a little over 100 respondents to the data survey. That should be a big red bell. Something ain't right. Either they're not collecting enough opinions or the questions are wrong or something. So they need to have gone back and redone that so that they could have come up with a plan that was more reflective of what the people in the area wanted. So what, again, I reiterate, you know, we would like to see Area 12 plan kept, the old plan that was previously accepted because it came closer to meeting the needs of the population. We have traffic problems like everybody else. We have school overpopulation. We have infrastructure problems. And, you know, it's something that needs to be worked out within the county, and it just can't apply to each individual area. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mike Price?
It just wouldn't be a Planning Commission meeting without hearing from Mike. So I just, I just, his name's not even on here. I just wrote it down. I just kind of fell asleep for a second, and his name was on here.
It's like a second home to me. Yeah. Thank you, Mike Price, 7380 Applegate Lane, Chattanooga, Tennessee. Mayor Womp started off in talking about riding a school bus. And as one who rode a school bus an hour and 15 minutes each morning and each evening, I applaud wanting to try to get another school north of Mayhand Gap because I can tell you that that's probably the reason I've been here before y'all all these years. It brain damaged me through the process of spending all that time on a school bus. Now, let me talk, if I might, for a second because the area plans talk about schools. And the use that has one of the reasons that can be used as a criteria to deny the ability to approve a zoning. A couple of sessions ago, I said before this body in the last five years that the student enrollment has basically remained unchanged last five years. In 2021, it was 44,248. Today, it is 44,765. In five years, the school systems have seen a 1% increase. 1%. Now, when I made that statement, I had an individual from the, that was in the audience, came to me and said, "Well, I can show you that Udoa High School has increased far more 30% over that time period." Well, so I've got this information, so I pulled it up. What do you think since 2019, 2020, the enrollment at Udoa High School has done in that time period? It's gone down 17%. But yet, many of the residents have come out and used schools in the Udoa area as a reason to try and deny a rezoning request. But the numbers do not support that. Well, if we go all the way back to 2010, it's been a 1.1% decrease over that same time period. And I know Udoa's increased since 2010 quite a bit. I then looked at, how about the elementary and middle schools? Well, what it shows since 2019, 2020 is that Udoa Middle School has decreased 35%. Wolftever Elementary School has decreased 4%. Udoa Elementary has decreased 9%. My point being is that these area plans talk about schools as a reason. And maybe there are areas where they are over at capacity, but not every area is over capacity, and this should not apply to all area plans. So that is something that needs to be looked at going forward. Sound like a fire alarm. I do have my daughter here. I'd like to use her three minutes.
Only because it's you, Mike.
I appreciate that.
We're just literally making an exception for you.
How many of y'all have gone through and read the appendix? It has all of these areas that are mentioned, like the St. Louis Museum Growth Exhibit, the plan as it relates to Nashville explanation of overflow and development standards, Williamson County updated conservation subdivision standards. Has anybody on this commission read these? Can you explain any of these in a short period? I bet you can. I went through and looked at some of these. Let's talk about what some of these require. Single-family lots, if we look at the Lumpkin County, Georgia, agriculture preservation area setbacks. It says, "Single-family lots require 150-foot buffer." Multi-family lots require 200-foot buffer. Okay? Let's go to Section 5.14, Conservation Subdivisions, Williamson County. "In zoning districts, at least 25% of the open space must be unrestrained land not subject to natural resource protections." Any of y'all know that? How about, "All healthy deciduous trees with diameter at breast height of 28 inches or greater, along with their drip line, must be preserved within permanently protected open space." Again, maybe these are good ideas. Don't pass this, though, unless you've read it and you understand it that these are recommendations moving forward. It also talks about we need to update our stormwater regulations. Well, I've got news for you. We just updated them on January 2nd. Why do we need to update them again? We just passed that. If you've not read the part, don't play Nancy Pelosi and say, "We'll figure it out after we pass it." You need to recommend moving it forward, but the appendices need to be dropped out. These are items that would go forward when we look at subdivision regulations and when you look at the details to figure it out. Not Lumpkin County, Georgia, not Williamson County, Tennessee. We need to figure out what's best for Hamilton County. best for Hamilton County, and not all of these conditions that nobody has really read, except maybe if you're a member of the RPA. You've not read these, don't pass those with that. Recommend to the planning commission to strike that out, and let's figure those things out later on. The last thing I would point out is, if Dan is correct, as it relates to zoning cases are going to be slowing down in the Udoa area, all the more reason to continue to hear the cases monthly, and then make your revisions to the plans annually, quarterly, whatever the case may be, because you shouldn't be overrun with the number of cases that will be heard. The last thing I'd point out is that the buffer requirements that were mentioned were supposed to apply for all residential subdivisions in all area plans. That's, that was left out in these area plans. That's actually an increase. That's supposed to have been in there for all residential subdivision types. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any questions? All right. Is it, I know it's Colleen, is it Cone?
Good evening, Colleen Kirk, 11937 Crestwood Trail, Harrison, Tennessee. So, some of you know, I just always like to come and share facts. So the first is, if you don't know, in the unincorporated areas, we don't actually have a dedicated firefighter department. So it is volunteer, and I think the home builders probably know this, that new homes burn eight times faster than the older homes. This is due to the buildings, building supplies that we're using, the way that furniture is now made. So the fact that we're putting homes closer together and having a volunteer firefighter team instead of dedicated definitely puts a lot of risk in there. And then I wanted to help ease your mind a little bit. So, one of the key reasons why people are actually buying houses later is compared to Gen X, millennials are 44% more likely to go to college. Gen X went, 33% went to college, and baby boomers 18%. And because of that, what the New York Times and Pew Research has said is that they are not getting married until they're in their 30s. So, Gen X was getting married between 24 and 25, and in 1968, the average age of marriage was 21 to 22. So we can't say that the reason why they're not getting homes is because they can't afford them. They're living their lives, they're getting an education. I mean, I think we all know, Mayor Wom, thank goodness, is focusing on trade schools because so many people have been sold this college dream and now are stuck paying these exorbitant college expenses. And then I think just the final fact is that currently, and again, Mayor Wom mentioned this, the private schools are at capacity. We're at capacity. We don't have any more room. We can't bring in 3,000 more new homes, which are currently slated for Udoa, and have a place for those kids to go.
Joe White, 6425 Hunter Road, and in District 9, and I do not want to hear that bell, so you don't have to worry about that, or that buzzer. I just want to address the roads issues. We've heard a lot of good things about the schools and all that. I don't know how many of our builder friends or developer friends here live in these areas we're talking about. I was, had the good fortune of buying one of Mr. Bell's properties on Hunter Road when I was younger and starting out, and so I get the idea, I get that we need affordable housing. However, my father was in a significant, serious wreck on Hunter Road on the interstate side. I stopped and saved a young man's life that had gone off a ditch on Hunter Road by cutting his seatbelt out and waiting on the ambulance and holding his head for 45 minutes until the emergency services got there. I was hit in my driveway in my vehicle and helped a lady out of her car on Hunter Road, right across from, from Mr. Bell's property. My point being, I'm probably one of the few people in this room that's had three major accidents on Hunter Road. How do you think I feel when I cross Hunter Road every day to get my mail? It scares me to death, and I am not easily shaken. Hunter Road, last I checked, last I heard, $30 million to expand it, probably more than that now. The reason setbacks are important is because we'd have to buy half of Hunter, the houses on Hunter Road to widen it. It's a dangerous road, Short Tell Springs is no better, and you guys have approved 1,500 houses on Hunter Road, in addition to what we've already got. The roads are dangerous, so until, until Hamilton County can figure out the roads, I think we gotta slow the building. I know we gotta build, I know we've gotta build homes for folks, but until we figure out the roads, and until we figure out the emergency services, I think we should pause it, or slow it down at least, so that we can deal with what's going on.
Okay. We've got two more.
My name's Melissa Ingram, I live at 12801 Thatch Road in Harrison, Tennessee. Mr. Highlander, I've spoke to you several times. And I can't get home, the road's gone. Y'all can't take care of what you got. You don't go and build more stuff when you can't take care of what you got. That's stupid and asinine. And to the Realtors, her explanation may have been better, that we live way upon, above our means. That's why people are waiting till they're 38 and 41 years old to go and buy.
Ma'am.
They want to have what we had to work so hard for.
Ma'am. Direct your comments to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then that's to you too. I don't know exactly who you are. But my point is, you can't go and start, I understand we gotta, we got progress. People want to live in Tennessee, why wouldn't they want to live in Tennessee? Chattanooga's a great area to live in, that's why I'm here. We moved here over 15 years ago, my husband's an engineer at Volkswagen. I moved to the country, you keep talking about the countryside, this and the zoning of the countryside. I moved to the country to be in the country. I grew up in tobacco fields. I grew up hundreds of acres of tobacco fields. There ain't much country around here where you can find open spaces, and I found it on Thatch Road, and by golly, I don't want it to go away. I understand people want to be out there and see it and be a part of it, but you're putting two and three and four houses on one acre? That's ridiculous. You gotta take care of what you got. I can't get home, I can show you the pictures. He's been down my road, he knows my road. They want to take care of everything else where all the others live, but by golly, they don't want to take care of what we got. We've got a one-lane road, one lane. It ain't two lanes, and I ain't asking for two lanes, because I don't want more people down there, but take care of what you got before you start trying to make everything else bigger and better.
Hi, my name's Steve Weinberg, I live at 9816 Case Few Drive in Harrison. First of all, I want to start out by addressing the fact of buying a home. I bought my first house when I was a junior in college, and from that time on, I've always been a homeowner. I think it's very important, I agree with that. What I disagree with, that I heard from our building community, is that all communities are the same. They're not. My first house that I bought was not in the greatest neighborhood, but it's what I could afford. I chose to live in Harrison when I moved here from South Florida six years ago. I chose to live where I live in Harrison because of the reason that many of us have brought up tonight. The rural atmosphere, the less crowded nature, the wonderful people. I am presenting a cautionary tale from my neighborhood, Davie, Florida. When I moved in 1996, I was surrounded by cattle land, very little development. The developers couldn't go any further west, because the Everglades were there, they were blocked. Right next to us was an area called Sunshine Ranches. They required half-acre lots for their houses. They never changed it. It was a Questrian neighborhood, it stayed that way for the next 25 years that I lived there. In the meantime, everything around there, Pembroke Pines, Miramar, all these other communities were allowed unchecked growth, zero lot lines. The traffic, which was able to expand, because we had roads and open area, unlike here, as, which has been pointed out, the traffic became so impossible that people had to spend a half hour just to get from their house roughly 20 blocks to the highway. I watched that happen within 30 years, and actually, it was less, it was more like 20 years, because of unchecked development. What you are hearing today is a group of people who have chosen to live in an area that has certain characteristics that they embrace. They've been fortunate to live there for a long time. I was fortunate to just move into that neighborhood. I checked at least eight or nine different communities throughout Chattanooga before I chose Harrison. There was a reason for it. The reason was that community and the surrounding areas have tremendous charm. I have watched, as Udoa, and I love Udoa, I go there all the time, every time I drive from my house in Harrison to Udoa, the traffic is worse. The streets are not able to be expanded, and the lifestyle for those people who are there and have been there for decades, I feel, is diminishing. Builders, please build, but build where there's room and people want that type of building infrastructure. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Ashley Main, 8721 Green Gap Road, 37363. So first off, who all is here, residents of Udoa? District 9, I'm sorry, last minute request. Udoa area, okay, thank you. So, I'm up here, I, for one, am 35, and I'm a second-time homeowner, for all of you who are worried about that. I'm also a mom of three, I recently had a baby last year, who is now on a trach in event, and y'all can't keep piling people into Udoa when we need to have urgency services at our fingertips. We had to call 911 back in December. Thankfully, he's okay, and he will be okay. We are not the only family out in Udoa who are in this situation. It took forever, at 6:30 in the morning, for an ambulance to get to our house. I think it was about 45 minutes. Thankfully, my husband and I are extremely skilled in handling him and his needs, but we needed an EMS ride to the hospital. So, I also do not want more people in Udoa, but there is not the infrastructure to support it. To get from my house, which is maybe three miles from the interstate, and my little home that we love, it takes such a long time. If we needed to get EMS support to our house and back to the interstate at rush hour, which used to be about a 30-minute window, is now an hour and a half, from about 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 a.m., roughly, and then again, from like 3 until, or no, 2 until like 4:30 p.m. It would take so long, and you are playing with people's lives, it's not just us. You're not considering the impacts, you're considering the paychecks and the money, and I get it. Everyone likes to make money, and I understand that some growth is needed, because things change, right? Culture changes, but some preservation also needs to change, and the infrastructure needs to support what we already have, because, like I said, it can be a life and death situation. And I'm just speaking as a mama up here for my babies, and, thank you.
Jennifer Duval. Was it Jennifer Duval? I can't read the last name. You would know if you signed up and your name's Jennifer.
So, I'd like to, Jennifer Duval, Colterville Road, Cell Creek. So while we've been here, there's been a major water outage in Cell Creek. It goes from McCalla Ferry, McCalla Ferry Road, all the way to Shipley Hollow. That's quite a bit of the rural area, so we have infrastructure, but now we have no water, this is regular. So I'm not sure how your water improvements are going to work. And the fire department put out homes, as everyone has mentioned, with the homes being packed closer together. We have a volunteer fire department, my son and I are on it, he's more active than I am. There are many times that there's regularly three-tone calls and more to get lift assist, to get fire assist, because it is volunteer, day and night. So it's not even a paid department, it covers a major area. Y'all want to add about, I think it looks like 4,000 more homes and manufacturing and industrial on the farm. I'm also on the McDonald Farm Advisory Committee. We would like to have that discussion separately outside of Plan Hamilton. This is Chapter 2, Research and Analysis, out of the Area 13 Planning, and it says, "The transportation analysis of Area 13 reviewed functional classifications, traffic operations, and safety potential improvements were identified by analyzing historic and projected traffic volumes, crash data, and related levels. With roads ranked by priority, analysis did show anticipated capacity constraints along US 27th Garage Pike. Review of historic crash data identified Armstrong Road and McCalla Ferry Road, which is where there's water outage right now, as exceeding the statewide average crash rate based on frequency and severity of crashes over the past three years. When we bought our home in 2016, hardly any traffic was going between Dayton to Cell Creek, Banquo, Saudi, and so on. Over the past seven years, it's non-stop traffic, we can't camp on our property because it's too noisy. The light pollution coming from either side is degradating the ecosystem, along with the butterflies, the, all of the wildlife, because the farm now has LED lights that are 24/7. We've hardly seen a monarch butterfly. Cell Creek is a major migratory trail area, along with Megs County and Birchwood, Udoa and Georgetown. So we're severely impacting our ecosystem. If the ecosystem isn't healthy, we're not going to be healthy.
Good evening, everybody. Joe Fusco, 6440 Ware Branch Cove Drive, up in Harrison, Tennessee. Dr. Highlander, good to see you, Mr. Janeway as well. I want to thank you all for being here. I also want to tell you that I don't envy your position and the decisions that you have to make, and the gravity of that does not escape me. As a former military pilot and a former pilot for Delta Airlines, I understand responsibility, and I'm, I've heard a lot of great statistics this evening, I've heard both sides of the fence. A lot of comments have resonated with me personally. One in particular was by our neighbor from Florida, who doesn't live that far away from me. She might be aware, I'm not a native Tennessean, although I feel like I was displaced at birth and should have been here. We moved here in 1995 after my wife retired from her 20-year stint in the military, and given our background, we had the opportunity to live anywhere we wanted to live, and we chose Tennessee. And that was a one-year experiment, and here we are, you know, 30-plus years later, because the culture, the people, the pace, having the opportunity to have a conversation with somebody, a complete stranger in a gas station, or just not, just taking the time to smell the roses. I think, you know, if you, if you're from this area all your life, that's what you know, but I'm here to tell you that, for those of you that have traveled the West Coast, the Northeast, that's not how it is. And so people that have chosen to be here, they've made a, you know, a solid choice based on their experiences. The people that live here, I believe they understand that it's a marvelous opportunity for them, but perhaps they don't realize how good they have it. So, all those things aside, I just wanted to thank you for your engagement. I want to thank my fellow citizens in the Area 9 planning compromise, what they call the compromise, even though it's a compromise between nothing and full-blown, full-tilt boogie. Anyway, y'all have a good evening, and I appreciate everything you have to do.
Thank you. Amy Anderson.
My name's Amy Anderson, and I wasn't planning on speaking, so I'm really nervous. Last time I was in here was for, my dad passed away, and they had Last time I was in here was for, my dad passed away, and they had a bar.
Amy, sorry to interrupt, we need your address.
Oh, 5824 Rocky Branch Road. So I know this is primarily for the Area 9. I'm from Area 7, and I was saying, the last time I was in here was, my dad had passed away, and so they were honoring local attorneys, and so now I feel like I'm trying to protect the land that he bought for us. It's surrounded by a development, you know, we're getting ready to, they've already started bulldozing the road or cutting down trees for a neighborhood of 112 houses in just a very small area that's actually right, that's over abandoned coal mines, which they've already gotten the approval to go in there. But I think what I want to say is, so I've been a midwife for 25 years, a nurse midwife, I've delivered babies, I don't know anything about all of this, but I do know that we practice with risks versus benefits. And so when you all are thinking about what you're going to approve or what you're not going to approve, think about, who does it truly benefit? And is it really necessary? He had said, Mr. Bell said that we need homes. So if we need homes, I'm all about helping people, but do we do, do we need all of the homes that they're proposing to build? Do we truly need that? And what, what are the risks? I got the courage to come up here because of the woman who talks about her baby. My grandbaby has cerebral palsy, and he has frequent seizures, and we have to call, you know, my daughter lives out on the back of Signal Mountain, and it's, that is very much a concern of ours, too. If we can't get him to the hospital, if we can't, you know, we don't, I just, what I really want to say is, when you're considering giving these people approval, why? Like, is it truly necessary? And, and why do we need to build that many homes in that small of an area? Is it, if it's helpful, that's one thing, but is it really helpful? Or is it just benefiting the people who are building the homes and making the money from the homes? If they're building homes that are affordable, then that's one thing, but he was saying that most homes are over $350,000 or whatever, so are these homes affordable? Because what I've seen, they're already listing, you know, they're saying they're going to be over $400,000. So I guess I just hope that you all will consider everything, you know, like, why, when you say yes, or when you, you say it's okay to do this, who is it helping?
Thank you, Amy. Jack Mernan?
I'll make this pretty brief. I live at 11102 Ware Point Lane. My good friend and neighbor, Joe Fusco, has said much of what I might have said, so I'll skip all the thank yous and good evenings, except for the people that spent their valuable time to come here. And now everybody's hungry, some of us are probably going to race to the restroom as soon as this event folds, me for sure. But anyway, I moved here in 1985. I lived all around different places in the States, grew up in Cincinnati, and came here for business. I took a job. And six years later, I decided to go out on my own, start my own company. Well, I was fortunate, I moved here in 85. 1986, I bought a nice property right across from Sequoia. I got a good price on it there in Harrison, because I think people were afraid that Sequoia was going to blow up. So it never blew up, and now my property is worth, I guess, about eight or nine times what I paid for it, but that is why I stayed there. I fell in love with the Tennessee River. It's my backyard. I can fish there, I can kayak, I built a dog run, my dogs love it, and, you know, it's the reason why I stayed. I opened up my own business in 1991. I could have moved anywhere with that business, because I started a company where I was a sales rep, traveling the country. I know the entire United States. There's no better place to live. I wouldn't move for any reason. But the thing is, people are moving there, as many others have stated, because of what we have here. You can't find it anyplace else, and it really is a bargain by comparison. We have a family, a brother, sister, and cousin that just moved in. One of them's from Colorado, the other from California. I said, "Why'd you move here?" They said, "You wouldn't want to live where we lived." So, you know, if we're going to take away that essence, that attraction of what we have here, then, then what good is it? You know, you're not going to worry about people overpopulating. If you turn this into what they are running away from, you know, that's going the wrong Somebody told me I should have been a lawyer, but I wasn't sure that was, I'm not going to say what I thought. But anyway, I didn't, but thanks for listening, anyway.
All right, we have several county commissioners here that may or may not want to speak. If you'd like to speak, we'd love to hear from you. I know. Commissioner Eversol wants to speak. Does anybody else wish to speak? All right, Commissioner Eversol, and then Commissioner Highlander.
I don't want to get in front of the famous Dr. Highlander. Now, I first of all want to thank the Planning Commission, because you agreed to not only come in today at 1 o'clock and hear some zoning cases, you got done at respectable time, and you came back to hear some citizens, to hear their concerns, and to hear what kind of vision that they had for the future of their community. And I want to say thank you for taking your time this evening and genuinely listening and asking some really good questions. I want to, Chairman Collier, I want to remind you, first time we met, shook hands, was in October 2022. September, a month before, good Lord above blessed me, and I was elected to represent District 10, and I was kind of a freshman, and I had a, I had a resolution in my hand, and I was ready to pass it, and that resolution in October '22 was to county to part ways with RPA. And I know Dan and I talked about it several times around that window of time, up to the point to where you invited me to come into an executive committee meeting and kind of talk through what my concerns were. My concerns are still the same today as they were then. While I think we're, we're making an attempt to be better, I think that we still have some, I still have some of the same concerns. I looked at a regional planning agency as an organization that took people and helped a community grow in the right direction. And the reason I ran to become a county commissioner is I didn't see that happening. If you, if you look at current statistics right now, just in College Dell North, which is Area 9, at the time, we had almost 4,000 homes that had been approved. WWTA says you have the approval, you can hook it up to SEPTIC, and as I was going around, me and my bride, as we were going around knocking on doors, talking to people about "Vote for me," the biggest concern was traffic congestion was number one. Number two was safety. The traffic congestion kind of came around from getting from point A to point B, and traffic congestion is, is the infrastructure piece that we talk about the most when we tie it to roads, but it is roads and bridges, bridges, but it's also access points. If you look at Exit 11, it's atrocious to get through Exit 11. It takes you longer to get from Snow Hill onto the interstate than it was taking me to get to my house, which is on Highway 58, to the end of Snow Hill Road, in some cases, because of just the bottleneck and the congestion. And, you know, me being, coming from the business for 40 years, I could not have a business model that that could be sustainable in. There's no way that that can happen. You know, we talked about schools. You know, I'll, I'll take what was said in the last five years, that's actually been almost 20 years. It's about 2.5% plus or minus for the last 20 years that our school population has stayed around the 45,000 students. I don't know if you guys are aware or not, but, but that's happened for the last 20 years. That's important, and it was important to me, and that's one of the things that I'm going to get to that we talked about. But we talked about public safety. Public safety is fire protection. We're, we're building almost 4,000 homes that was already approved, and we're building them, and we're hoping, we literally are hoping that someone is going to sign the dotted line and volunteer their, their time to get trained that they don't get paid for, and then get caught out in the middle of the night and come to your rescue or my rescue when my house is on fire, or when there's a medical emergency. That, we're, we're continuing to, to, to layer on additional, you know, growth, but we're still having a, an issue with trying to staff fire departments. We have ambulance issues. I heard that brought up earlier. Mr. Janeway did some studies. We, we had, finally had some studies done in the last couple of years that talked about response times. And when you looked at response times from fire, and you looked at it from medical emergencies, those response times were ridiculously high. But it gave us a point to say, you know what, maybe it's time we back off a little bit. Let's fix some of these infrastructure issues, let's slow the pace that we've got going right now. While I want to keep green, I want to keep pastures, I raised horses, raised cows, I worked in the tobacco field, believe it or not, many years ago for, for, for a long time, but why don't we slow the pace? Let's get some of these issues caught up. If Plan Hamilton is a five-year plan, then why don't we, why don't we back off a little bit? Let's utilize what's already been approved, and let's roll with what's already been approved. Let's get some access time to, to, to work on some of the infrastructure improvement. I think that we need to go through, in my opinion, is we need to go through the compromise plan, and I think that's kind of a high end. I think we need to look at that compromise plan for Area 9, because Area 9 is what we're talking about more than anything, because this came from Area 9. But I think we need to look at, at Area 9 needs to go with the compromise plan until we get these other issues caught up, because all we're doing is we're going to multiply, we're going to, we're going to make it continuous headache, we're going to continue to have safety issues, fire issues, police response times, ambulance response times. We're going to continue to have those things until we say, you know what, let's back off for a period of time, let's let things get caught up, let's utilize other parts of the county, let's utilize parts even within the city. There's parts within the city that we can, that we can continue to grow, but let's pause an area that's been really brutally impacted these last 20 years, and, and let's pause for a little bit without us having to do a moratorium and, and stop growth totally in those areas. Let's pause, let's, let's look at the, let's look at the two, two and a half per acre where we do have sewer, let's keep it at two where we don't have sewer, so that we can get some of these things caught up, because we, we have a long road ahead of us. Thank you for listening, appreciate the, the time, appreciate you giving this group the time to come in and say what was on their mind. Shows you they care, really shows you they care, so thank you.
All right. Well, that, that I think officially ends our time on the agenda for public comment. So thank you, and I will just thank you, Commissioner Eversol, for everything you said, and thank you, everybody, for being here and participating in the process, and just giving us a better understanding of what it is that you want to see in your communities. So I think it's fantastic. Yeah, absolutely. That's, it's all us now, so you can be first.
Thank you, Chairman. And Commissioner Eversol said a lot of things. I'm Steve Highlander, District 9, and my cohort there is District 10, but together we're Area 9. And so thank you very much. I have sat on this board before, I'm a substitute now, but I appreciate very much the long day that you all have put in, and I'm speaking to you. I mean, you have put in at, at no pay for yourselves, you've given a lot, and I do appreciate it. I, I've done it, but it's two or three things I want to add, mainly reiterate some of what Commissioner Eversol said. One thing about the community, Ms. Reagan said that she moved here, she's a third generation. I'm a third generation. My grandparents bought, and my grandfather and his brother bought adjoining properties in 1930 or 31, some question. They paid $10 an acre for it. You can't find that now, I don't believe, can you, Ethan? Yes, okay. But we, we've been here a long time. My grandfather during, when they had gas ration, he rode a horse to Udoa with burlap sacks to get groceries. So we've been here a long time, and I appreciate it. The roads are really a problem out here, and I will say this, Mayor Watt is trying to come up, I, I fussed and fussed and fussed and talked from the dice and publicly and privately about the need for infrastructure, and we got a $5.8 million improvement plan next year. Now, I, I, I think RPA said we need 130 million, and one of the county commissioners said we need 150 million, but it's a start. It is a start, and I'm thankful for that, we're coming. I talked to, at a, at a Chamber of Commerce meeting, I talked to a TDOT official, and I said, "Characterized Hunter Road for me." He said, "Oh, wow." He didn't want his name mentioned. He said, "It has more curves than a five-gallon bucket of fish hooks, it has deep ditches and no shoulders." And that's a pretty good assessment for those of you that know Hunter Road. I had a community meeting at Wallace Smith Elementary School, and a friend of mine who lived on the far end of Hunter Road was the assistant principal, he was going to open the building up for us, and there was a wreck on that two-lane road, and it took him an hour and a half to go two miles. Now, my grandmother lived with us in my home on Short Tail Springs until she was 98. I was really afraid that if we had had, if she'd had another heart attack, I could not have gotten her to a hospital in time. And the infrastructure is really rough. I, I took Dan Reuter when he first came in on a, we, we rode for two or three hours all over the area, Mr. Eversol's area and mine, we went from Birchwood to Udoa Ringo Road down 58, and the state was wise. The state built, made four-lane, made Highway 58 a four-lane out to Runyon Road, and that was a wise thing. When that happened, people said, "Oh, gosh, those people are foolish. Now we have more room for building out there than we would have on a four-lane road." But if you come out 58 at rush hour, it's backed up almost Ammacola sometimes, and going bumper to bumper all the way through. The roads, you know, I look at, Snow Hill Road has not changed, other than maybe being repaid since I started driving it over 50 years ago, and there are wrecks after wrecks after wrecks after wrecks. And some of them are not reported, some are, but we, when I first came on the commission, I said, "We need to slow down till we get," I said, "Oh, infrastructure will follow development." I'm still looking for it. I, I mean, if it does, I'm all for it, but I haven't seen it yet, and I do, and once again, I do appreciate Mayor Watt coming up with what he's looking at $19 million plus the next year or two, and we need it, and I very much appreciate that. The second's our fire departments. And Jeff mentioned it, Commissioner Eversol mentioned it, our fire departments are wonderful. I love them, I appreciate them, I do everything I can to support them. TRICOM and Highway 58 in our area, but all across the county, they're wonderful. But they are volunteers. They are volunteers, they don't get paid, and on a given time, we might have three or four or five retired people available, and other people are working their jobs. And, and I worry about fires happening, and they do a great job. We lost a fire engine on 58. They had someone, a gentleman caused the wreck, he did not have nearly, he had not nearly sufficient insurance to cover the replacement. We're down one fire engine, one, one tanker engine. We need that, and our economy is tied, it's rough. The safety issues are really dangerous. I, I am so concerned, on Short Tail Springs, I have seen cars at a, sitting at sideways in a ditch, all the way in a ditch, and buried, and I've seen that, I'm just so thankful there's been more deaths. The brother of one of my former students has died on Snow Hill Road, and I went to the funeral, and it's hard to do, to see a young person, see a young person deceased. It's, I, I am thankful that we have East Hamilton now, it's alleviated some of the overcrowding problems of Udoa High School, but it's, that's still in Commissioner Eversol's district, and my district's affected by it, too. I, I had a grandson that graduated from Udoa High School last year, he went to the Army for six months, now he's in college. It's It scared me to death thinking about him driving to Uwaw, driving to Uwaw on Snow Hill Road. Hunter Road is bad, too. I'm like Commissioner Eversole. I know we need homes. I know we do, but let's slow it down until we can let the infrastructure catch up. The county's trying to catch up. I talked to some people about Thatch Road. It's a little road. They've been working on it for, I don't know, since about Christmas, I think, and they're trying to get it fixed. But Brandon Marocker is doing a great job, but he has so much to do all over the county, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of miles of road, and sometimes he'll work on one then another and another. I'm really pleased with what he's done, but we need to catch up on our infrastructure. And I am not against growth, but it needs to be responsible growth. Thank you very much.
All right. Love to hear from some other members of the Planning Commission in regards to the comments we've heard. We've got two action items here in front of us. So at the end of the day, we need a motion.
The only thing I want to say is, you know, it's obviously good to hear from the people that are here and get their opinions on it, but I will say this. If you sit here every month, the concerns that you have are all legitimate, for sure, but every area of this county will say exactly, and I think you heard a little bit of it. You heard it, Area Seven. I think the people in Hickson, when they come here, they'll say, look at One Fifty-Three, look at Hickson Pike. If you get down, even into the city, you get in St. Elmo and you watch the traffic, we try to do some help with one of the missions down in St. Elmo, and if you get on the way down there a little late, it'll take you forty-five minutes to go down through St. Elmo because of the traffic. I don't know of a place that is not overwhelmed. Part of this is because we've done a great job in selling what a great community we are. People want to come here, and you've heard people talk about, we moved here, and we've got people every, and this is sometimes you sit here and you hear someone will come up here and say, well, I moved here last year, and I don't want anybody else living here. And it's like, that's really hard to hear, you know? And I think part of our problem is, I don't, I think all sides can agree that the infrastructure is where we are really, I mean, I don't think most people have a problem having neighbors or even caring how big their neighbor's yard is. It's that they don't want to wait forty-five minutes to get to the interstate. I know everyone is frustrated with that. I mean, you talk, Hunter Road, my mother used to warn me when I was driving to high school on Hunter Road, because it was, you know, no shoulder, terrible, and it's not changed. The only difference is we've built two schools on it since I drove it. When I drove it, there was nothing on it, and now there's, I don't know, three thousand houses and two schools. So the idea that we need to build infrastructure is clear. The idea that, and I think a lot of what I think we're after is going to happen, we may not call it a moratorium, but in effect, there is a moratorium. Sewer is going to be the limiting factor going forward in most parts of the county. I think the, what is it you said, Jeff? We got four thousand approved or something like that? And I think that the WWTA has approved that and said you can do that, but beyond that, I don't think you can get a half-bath hooked up, as far as I understand. We're done unless something changes. So as a practical matter, we may not call it a moratorium, but we're going to be in one for the foreseeable future, I think.
Any other comments? Mr. Baby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to take just a moment to thank the RPA staff, along with all the residents that have taken a part in also stakeholders in making this plan come to fruition. There is a lot that I do like about this plan, and I think specifically, I think it is fantastic how we've made a concerted effort to identify the infrastructure needs of our county. I don't know that that has been done in such a extensive way, and I think that, my hope is that that is going to give our county's leadership the ability to identify and focus on ways to solve our most pressing infrastructure, infrastructure needs. There are some things in the plan that do provide me some concern. You know, one of the things that I've really loved hearing is throughout the meeting tonight is the, you know, second, third-generation families that live in these areas, and I think that that builds a very unique community, and that is just a great thing to have. What worries me is if we do limit growth to, over-limit growth, that we will not have opportunities for future generations to enjoy those same things. So I think there is a balance to be had there, you know? I think Mr., or the staff earlier said that we're going to need forty thousand new homes in our county by 2040. That is just a staggering number to me, that we can't put all those in one area. We're going to have to spread them out, and I think we got to make sure that all options are available to be able to take on the housing needs of our future, that our county will need in the future. So just wanted to get those, get those comments on record. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I live in a very urban area now. I spent my entire childhood, childhood until I was eighteen and started college in a very rural area in the north end of this county. I understand the legitimate concerns that have been brought today, and I appreciate the people taking this much time and interest in their government. That's really important, and it's the only way government functions properly is if you take a role in it. While we understand those concerns, we are in the business of managing and balancing multiple concerns, and to say that one of them is not a concern, like housing affordability, is to ignore a very real reality that we're facing. And that's not to say that one should take priority over the other, but I think we should kind of see the whole board when we're talking about this. Hamilton County adds twenty people every day. People are being born here, people are being married here, people are being divorced here, people are returning from college, and we want them to live here after they return from college from somewhere else. They're moving out of their parents' houses here, and they are moving here. We tend to hear the most about that last part. So the growth is coming. It sounds great to put a pause on it or slow it down. It's not something we can fully control, so we have to manage it. Should most of the new growth go into urban areas? Of course, absolutely. Everybody up here knows that. But I think we have to keep those other considerations in mind when talking about how we do an area plan for any part of Hamilton County, whether it's rural, suburban, or urban. If we don't manage the growth, we will go the way of Nashville, we will go the way of Austin, Texas. They refuse to manage their growth, and now they have priced out third-generation residents and fourth-generation residents, because the people moving here from New York, Illinois, and California, which accounts for more than half of the people moving here from other states, they are all coming from areas with higher real estate costs, and they have more money to buy up the few homes that are in the rural areas. That is something we cannot ignore. So ignoring it doesn't make them go away, it just makes them displace Hamilton County residents. Some are fortunate enough to inherit homes, most are not, and I, for one, would like to see everybody who wants to be able to live here to have an opportunity to live here. And it's interesting, it's tough to see, to see where the, where is the line, because like Barry said, almost every month, we hear somebody say, well, I moved here two years ago, and we're full now. And for the people who say that, I want to say, well, there were people in this room arguing that your house shouldn't have been built, and you shouldn't have been allowed to live here. And when I hear six or seven years, I promise you, like, some of the people in this room opposed your house being built. So I think it's one of those things where, when you're unknown, you know, you might not be as welcome here, but when, once you get, once you get here, you meet neighbors, you make new contacts, and you become a part of the community. So we shouldn't just see these people as only outsiders, but again, the bulk of our growth and housing demand comes from people who are already living in this area.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman? I was going to just say, I'm going to go to the podium. Again, I just want to, again, thank so many people that have come to public meetings and thank our elected officials, because they really trusted when we started this process, Chairman Eversole, Mayor Wamp, and others, that Commissioner Highlander, that we have a separate county plan and separate from the city of Chattanooga. And again, through that process, I think it's going to allow us to better implement the plan. And implement it means, you know, everything we've talked about tonight. So we've never had an unincorporated county plan. We're asking the Regional Planning Commission tonight to recommend this draft plan to the Board of Commissioners and give the Board of Commissioners, we'll have some time over the next couple of months to review it and talk about it a lot more. I didn't introduce myself when I first got up here. I'm Dan Reuter. I'm the director of the RPA. But I do want to say, in addition to everything else we've talked about, we did spend time developing a fire services study with Nathan and with county fire services folks, because that's an important issue in unincorporated Hamilton County. We've spent a lot of time, both in the city and the county, looking at our transportation issues. I believe that's the biggest problem we got. We need a lot of money. We need hundreds of millions of dollars for roads and other improvements in the city and the county. I waited for somebody from the homebuilding industry to say anything about, we need another sewage treatment plant, never heard it. You would think, you would think we would have agreement that we need roads, we need, one day, we may need more sewer, but for whatever reason, seven, eight years ago, we didn't, the county commission decided not to, and now we're living by that decision. It's a wonderful, wonderful county. So the fact that we're going to, I grew up on a septic tank, didn't seem to have a problem flushing the toilet. But my point is, I understand we have housing needs. I think everybody at RPA absolutely agrees that we need, everybody that wants to buy a house or live in this county or wants to stay should have that opportunity. And so, again, we absolutely support more housing. The reason we don't have, we're mostly zoned A1. Most of the county is zoned A1 and does not have sewer and won't have sewer anytime soon. Even if we had a hundred million today for a sewage treatment plant, they won't have sewer for a long time. And so, again, we got it, that's the reality of the county we're living in, and I don't see the point of sort of dancing around those issues. I think they're the real issues. Again, I appreciate our county commission. They've invested a lot in our school system in the last couple of years, and again, that's, I'm glad we're addressing those issues. But again, you're going to hear me talk about money for roads for about the next, the rest of this year, because it really is the biggest issue that RPA can influence. We can't ask WWTA and county commission, we can ask them, but we can't do a whole lot about sewer. We can't do a whole lot about a lot of issues, but we absolutely, as part of our charter, advocate and to try to find more money for transportation projects, and that's what I mean by implementing. That's, I believe, the biggest safety issue. When you leave here tonight, I tell, I try to tell everybody, my kids, everybody, don't drink and drive, don't text and drive, be safe, because it's the most dangerous aspect of our lives often. So again, the last thing I'll say is, we are a destination for folks. People love living here, want to move here, and, you know, I don't know why we keep advocating that this is such a beautiful community. I've started saying, see Rock City and then go home. But it's kind of a joke, but if we are going to have visitors here, I really believe the visitors should be helping pay for roads. And so, again, I'm going to be advocating for more road money for a long, long time. So again, thank you, and I, again, we hope that you will recommend the plan to the Board of Commissioners tonight, and then we can continue to go through this process, because it is sort of a compromise across the county. It was actually Area Seven that started first. I mean, Area Seven started, I feel like, three years ago, and we made them slow down until the rest of the county could catch up, and we've kind of caught up now. So again, thank you, Commissioners, Mayor Wamp, for all your trust in the RPA. Thank you.
Hey, Dan, I do have a question for you. At the, when Mike Price was making his comments, he referenced several, I don't remember the exact word he used, I don't know if he's still here.
Something about the appendix, which I honestly don't know what he was talking about. So if y'all don't want to support the appendix, I don't know that that's.
Okay, we were just.
So if they're examples, what they are is probably examples to other counties, and could be in Tennessee, could be in Georgia or somewhere where they've done something that our consultants or the staff thought was a good example. I think that's probably all it is.
Mr. Janeway?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you that most residents don't love the appendix either, so if that's an item that we want to strike, we probably could get plenty of support for that. Yeah, they took it out of nine, so it's not in nine, it's in every other plan. So that's, I would think we could handle the same types. If we want regulations in the place types, we can handle them in the place types.
Sure. Thank you. And also, Karen, I heard at some point, I think it was while you were presenting, the number of students that are enrolled in K through twelve education in Hamilton County right now. What was that number?
The number is sixty thousand. I think that includes private schools and universities, too.
Sixty thousand? Okay. All right. Any other?
And I would say, we want those young adults to stay here. We need them in our workforce, and we want them to live here. And I think, you know, I have daughters. I wish they'd move here, but they won't. But either way, I think we should be, our intention should be that we want folks that are here to stay. Now, do we want more folks from other states? I don't care if anybody else is here and retires. I mean, it's a beautiful place, but they can go into Middle Tennessee.
Mr. Anderson.
Well, nobody else wants to do this, so I guess I didn't hear any other lights? No? So I'd like to make a motion, if you'll bear with me. I think I've made all the notes that I need to, to contain everything we need in the motion. So I'd like to move to recommend Plan Hamilton as presented with following revisions. Number one, strike the appendix. Number two, add the addendum of amendments from HBAGC for review and action by the county commission. And that is my motion, Chairman.
We have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second part, Chris, what all does that entail?
It's the packet we received earlier today that was discussed also in this meeting.
I can speak to the two largest items. They, they took issue with limiting everything to two houses an acre. Basically, they want up to three houses an acre if you have sewer or an onsite system. And then they want the amendments to be able to be done monthly instead of every six months. Those are the two largest items in their revisions. There are some other language items as well, but those are the two largest substantial ones.
Yeah, there were several, just vagary, basically, that was left up to too much determination by the reader. So there were a lot of vague statements they had in there, too, but those were the big two. And just to reaffirm my motion, Chairman, which I believe has been seconded, yes, it has.
It has.
I'm adding these for review and action by the county commission, because there are some conflicts between the two documents, but I think we should send both to the county commission for their review and action and determination.
Okay.
Got you. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Highlander.
Then, Mr. Reuter, how would monthly affect you? Do you, would you prefer having a stated plan that you could deal with rather than for six months or a year rather than monthly, or how would it affect RPA?
Well, Mr. Commissioner, I kind of said earlier, I don't, I expect a lot of the development trends that we've had in the last ten years were because we had a lot of sewer available. And so, we saw a lot of rezonings, and, you know, maybe we didn't have, we definitely didn't have the right amount of infrastructure funding, you know, because I would, I would be the first to say, let's spend a lot of money on Snow Hill Road and Hunter Road. But I think I just don't expect that risk, that kind of development activity. I mean, just because sewer, to me, is a very limiting factor in my mind, but I think, you know, again, that we've looked around the state, and I think the model was Knoxville that we kind of modeled this after, and I think they now do it quarterly. Yeah. And I think that, I think why, you know, we want, I do, I want the Board of Commissioners to adopt the plan by resolution, because I think it's going to give the public and everyone the, you know, the strong belief that the county commission has a plan. And I think that's important, because I think that helps build trust, to help us get more money to fund roads. Now, I know that makes folks think that that land use map is now more rigid, and if I come in with a rezoning, I can't, it's going to take me some period of time. I, again, I absolutely think, you know, if a developer... I, again, I absolutely think, you know, if a developer has a project, if there's a property for sale, that there's a development, and the Board of Commissioners support it, I think we will find a way to get that project, amend the plan, and make it happen. But again, I think the Board of Commissioners are concerned about infrastructure. So, again, I, it's, I'm perfectly open to, I came from a state where we did not have that in state law, so I never had the availability of trying to, you know, I did work in a county where we had monthly amendments, and we absolutely had, you know, took two votes, vote to change the plan, and then a vote to change the zoning. So, again, I just don't expect that amount of development activity. I'd like to tell you I do, but I just, you know, I think the sewer is just such a big, a big factor to me, so.
If I could follow up, Mr. Chairman, what, or maybe I should ask Mr. Anderson, you're not asking us to vote for Plan Hamilton as it is, you're asking us to send it to the county commission for review, rather than to vote on it tonight, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, because we want the, sorry, Chris.
Well, yeah, yes, and I believe the cleanest plan was to get the county commission to actually make an adoption first. We make a recommendation, and our recommendation would be to review this as well as the amendments that were submitted from HBAGC today.
And we, whatever, we want to make sure that the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission have, obviously, the same plan with the same, but, you know, the Board of Commissioners has never really had the benefit of lots of meetings to talk about all the issues, and I think that's important.
Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, Chairman, I just have a quick question. So, are we approving the compromise plan for Area Nine, plus the other plans as is?
Go ahead, Karen.
Okay.
This is, this is not an approval, this is a recommendation.
Yeah, recommend, are we recommending the compromise plan? I'm trying to figure out for Area Nine, which one we're sending to the commission, is it the compromise plan?
I believe it is.
Yes.
I'm going to let Karen answer it.
We only have one Area Nine plan right now, and that is the plan that the committee worked with, and so.
That's identified here, that says compromise?
That's right. They call it the compromise plan, and I think they would like maybe a couple more items, but that is our Area Nine plan that we're presenting for adoption.
Thank you.
But to be clear, Mr. Anderson, you're recommending that we include the homebuilders' items as well?
Yes.
As a part of your motion?
That's the question.
I would prefer that we have a separate vote on each, but that's just my preference.
Well, that's an improper motion, there's.
We already have a motion in a second. Dr. Cottle, did you want to say something?
I was just trying to clarify, same question, you're sending both the homebuilders and District Nine together to.
Well, District Nine's part of what is recommended by staff, I think the homebuilders, I think what, if I understand correctly, it's for review during the process with the Board of Commissioners. I don't think it's necessarily supporting all those things. I think you're asking staff, and I guess county staff, and the Board of Commissioners to consider it.
Yes, again, to restate, to review and act on the amendments for review and action, review's the first part of that.
Any other questions, comments, any more discussion? All right, we have a motion, has been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we get, who was the nose on that?
Jenway.
Jenway and Highlander.
Barry? Yes, do your thing.